Be present in a regular location and all members of the Planning Commission will attend this meeting by telephone or other electronic means. So we will begin this meeting with a roll call. Sonia.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Breakers, excuse me. Commissioner DeJoy.
Here.
Commissioner Edgerton is excused today. Commissioner Grill. Commissioner Hong.
Here.
Commissioner Hood.
Present.
Commissioner Lindicky. Commissioner McMurtry is excused today. Commissioner Muchipau.
Here.
Commissioner Perryman.
Here.
Commissioner Presley. Commissioner Presley, I know you're here, I just can't hear you. Commissioner Riley. Commissioner Raisberg.
Here.
Commissioner Said.
Here.
Commissioner Taggeoff.
Here.
Commissioner Underwood.
Here.
Commissioner Yang.
Yes, please.
And of course Chair.
I'm here.
And I'm here, sorry Sonia.
Okay, I knew you were here, I just didn't hear you. Thank you.
Um, so we um, will go head on to the agenda. The first item on the agenda is the Steering Committee has ongoing. We met this morning to discuss sort of the present, well, we were going to receive a presentation about the legal authority, what creates the commission. Kind of the parameters of what the commission is and is not allowed to do. Mr. Warner was unable to join us this morning, but we had a really fruitful discussion. Based on the information that Mr. Warner was able to provide to us. So that, to the commissioners that are interested, that discussion is ongoing. We will again meet next Planning Commission meeting. And then hopefully have some form of presentation or information for the commission. In early April with regards to making recommendations and or what authority we would have to. Move the IZ zoning study, which is some, or the inclusionary zoning study, which I know is something. That most if not all the commission members have expressed an interest in. The other item that I wanted to speak before passing it on to Louise was we had. A recognition today, but I don't know if Commissioner Edgerton is on, so I will. Sort of set that aside for now and see if he joins us in a little bit and I'll just. Plug it in into the agenda when he did.
Not coming. Mr. Edgerton's excused today, he had something else that came up, so he's not coming to the meeting.
Did he, did he email you?
Yes, he emailed me this morning, like at ten to eight.
Okay, so then I'll move on to the next item and then Louise, you can direct me on what you want me to do with the recognition. So director announcements.
Yes Chair, thank you. It looks like he may be in process of joining. I'm. Commissioner Edgerton, and here he is.
Great.
Hello?
Hi Commissioner Edgerton, how you doing?
I'm doing okay. Sorry, I, I had another meeting just come up that I had to be in, but I told him that it sounded like I needed to just step away for a minute.
Just for a minute, I think.
Um, oh, okay. So.
So Louise, could you put up? The information.
Yes Chair, can you see that?
I, I can see. Yes. So for those that don't know, Commissioner Edgerton termed out and a replacement was found to take his spot. Commissioner Edgerton. Was kind enough to stay on in the commission while a replacement was found so that we would have someone speaking for Ward, well, just speaking from Ward five, not on behalf of Ward five, but. His family and the Ward five president have been in contact with staff. About recognizing Commissioner Edgerton's work and so. I'm not going to do this as well as Commissioner Reveal did, and I know most of the time that Commissioner Edgerton worked, he had the. Pleasure of working with her, so I apologize in advance, Commissioner Edgerton, if I don't, if I don't do this as well as she does. So I'll just go ahead and read the declaration. So declaring, Louise, can you put it back up here?
Can you see, can you see it or?
I'm not seeing it.
Let me try again.
Alright, so the declaration declares March 5th, 2021 as Daniel Edgerton Day in the city of St. Paul. Whereas Commissioner Dan Edgerton was appointed to the St. Paul Planning Commission on January 27th, 2012 and ends his service. To the city on March 5th, 2021. And whereas Dan has reached the maximum time anyone can serve on the Planning Commission or would want to serve on the Planning Commission, serving three terms over nine years. And whereas he has served on four committees, so the Planning Commission, the Comprehensive Planning Committee from 2012 to 2013. And the Neighborhood Planning Committee from 2013 to 2016, and when both committees merged into one. He continued to serve on it from 2016 to 2018 and the Zoning Committee from 2014 to 2021. And whereas in 2017, he became the Zoning Committee Chair and served in this role intentionally and pragmatically. Offering his infamous preamble at the beginning of each meeting, reminding folks to keep testimony concise, to the point and avoid redundancy. And whereas Dan leads the Water Resource Team in the Minneapolis Office of Stanek. A consulting engineering and planning firm where the focus of its work is infrastructure planning and sustainable stormwater management. And whereas he received his BS and MS in civil and environmental engineering from the University of Wisconsin-Madison. Whereas Dan serves on many community boards, the North End Development Team since its inception. Which has provided over half a million dollars of grants and loans to the North End community, the Rice and Larpinter Alliance Advisory Board. As well as filling up any of his free time with joining the Como Community Council. And whereas Dan and his family have lived in the Como Park neighborhood since 1988. He and his wife Robin have three children together, Angelique, Elizabeth, and Alexander. And whereas in his free time, Dan enjoys their annual family trips to Northern Wisconsin, watching Packer games with his son Alexander. Reading history books particularly about the Civil War, adding to his photo collection of gutters and trains. Judge Sinister's Volunteers with church and grows bonsai, and now therefore, I'll do one more, whereas Commissioner Edgerton has served as a great mentor. To younger commissioners who have asked, and he has been kind to spend time and. Explaining the intricacies and procedures of the zoning committee. Be it resolved that St. Paul City Council declares March 5th, 2021 as Daniel Edgerton Day in the city of St. Paul. So congratulations Dan, it's a, it's a big day for you.
Well, thank you, and actually my. I don't know if you can see this or not, but my son just handed me. I don't know if you can see it, but he just handed me the resolution, a framed, so I. People seldom see me speechless, but I really, I just really. Am grateful for this and grateful for the time that I've been able to serve on Planning Commission. It's been a terrific experience. I've just learned a lot and. Really has made me appreciate the folks we have working, you know, at the city, for the city, you know, both staff. And as well as, as well as the, all the volunteers who volunteer their time on Planning Commission and other committees, so. Thank you so much, it's, it's been wonderful and I, I hope that just keep plugging away in different roles to work for, for the city of St. Paul. I think we've got a great, it's a great place, it's a. A great city and. I, I'm just really grateful to, to be here, so thank you everyone.
Thank you Dan, and I know you can't see it, but there's going to be fireworks tonight and everything for you, so. City went out for you, man. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I know you have a lot of family support here today too, and they were able to convince you to come in even though I know you said you had other, other things that you had to do this morning.
Yeah, I apologize, there's a last minute thing, I didn't, I did not realize, so.
I see, uh, we usually don't do this, but I'll call ahead and call on former Commissioner Kim, who wants to say a comment, and I think we'll make an exception.
Thank you, I will use that personal point of privilege, thank you so much. Um, I just wanted to just briefly interject your meeting, just to also name that I've, I've had the pleasure to work with Dan in a few capacities. And Dan has just worked so hard in community and that's something that I've always really admired and really appreciated as a model. As we continue to move through spaces of power, it's important to always feel rooted with our neighbors and that's something that I've, I've seen illustrated day to day in Dan's life. Um, I will agree Chair Ron Helmore Ellis that my first zoning committee meeting was terrifying and. Dan was really the calm leader through some really tough votes, but also was just such a tremendous role model and mentor for me when I had questions. Anytime and always talked to me after meetings and just really encouraged my own leadership and my own thought process through, through the Planning Commission, so. Just really commending your legacy of work. It's just really extraordinary to think that anyone would spend nine years doing something like this. And yet here you are, and so just a deep gratitude to your service and also a deep gratitude to your mentorship as well, both personally and professionally, so. So thank you so much, thanks for representing Ward five with just complete and absolute dedication.
So with that, congratulations Dan, I still think everybody in the zoning committee will be waiting for that New Year's Eve drink that we were promised. That has now been passed to Commissioner Baker, but I'm, I'm sure you did not tell them, I'll remind them and we'll make sure to send an invite your way when that occurs and Commissioner Lindicky too.
Be sure to do that, we, yeah, I would. I would love to join you for that.
Alright, thank you Dan, so we have other items on the agenda, so I'm gonna.
Thank you.
Go ahead and call on that, thank you for joining us. So moving on to the next item, not as fun and interesting, but Director Breda, do you have any announcements for the commission?
I, I do. Couple things, and, and again, we are going to miss Commissioner Edgerton certainly, thank you for all that you've done. Wanted to just point out, the, the definition of family zoning study public hearing happened this last Wednesday at the city council. Some discussion about. The proposed amendment change, which includes there's an amendment to the student housing overlay area. So the definition of family had proposed increasing the maximum number of undergraduate students. From four to six within each home that's registered as a student housing, student home. Within that overlay district and all the other standards of that staying intact. Ultimately, there was not an amendment made to the Planning Commission recommendation. Proposing to go up to six students, which would be parallel to the six, six adult students, I'm sorry, six adult non-students proposed in the broader. Definition of family study, but quite a bit of conversation about sort of the history of that student housing overlay and a lot of public input. About, you know, what, what's been achieved with that, with that overlay, so just wanted to point that out for the Planning Commission. And secondly, also at the council, city council this week, we, we had several new. Future Planning Commission appointments named, and so. Four, four individuals named and we were already reaching out to them to get them scheduled for, for an orientation. And hope to have many or all of them join next meeting. So those are the two things I wanted to mention. Thank you.
Thanks Louise, I guess I'll, I ask this question every time we have new appointments, but I do know we have several commissioners who are very graciously staying on and. Will any of those be replacing, any of the new commissioners be replacing the outgoing commissioners?
Chair, yes, so. We have one Ward one. New Commissioner. Would be replacing Commissioner Lindicky and we have. Another Ward five appointment. So with Commissioner Muchipau wanting to transition off. You know, potentially as soon as next time, and then the two other ones are from Ward seven. One would, would, would replace Commissioner Oliver and one is, is a vacant position. So that's.
So I missed a lot of that, I don't know if it was my connection, were other commissioners able to hear Louise?
Yes, I heard.
Yes.
Naida.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
So Lindicky, Commissioners Lindicky, Oliver and Muchipau are. Potentially as soon as next time able to transition or, or, yeah, transition off.
Okay, and so. Thank you for the update Louise. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the District 12 Plan. Today, the city of St. Paul Planning Commission is holding a public hearing on the District 12 Plan. Notice of the public hearing was published in the legal ledger on Thursday, February 11th, 2021. And was sent to the citywide early notification system list of recipients and other interested parties. So before the hearing is open for public testimony, the staff is going to make a presentation on District 12, on the District 12 Plan. So I believe this is Anton making the presentation.
That's right Chair, hello, Planning Commissioners, let me share my. Presentation here. So my name is again Anton Jervy, I'm a Principal City Planner and the liaison to. St. Anthony Park Community Council. There are several existing plans in the area, in the neighborhood that will be remaining, West Midway Industrial Plan, St. Anthony, St. Anthony Park Como 2030 Plan, Raymond Stationery Plan, Westgate Stationery Plan. And the University Raymond Commercial Historic District, that's not a plan, but there are, it is a district within the area. And when this plan is adopted, we will decertify the. 2008 District Plan. Here's the outline of the neighborhood, it's in the north west corner of the city. And you'll see the outlines here are the, the outlines of the plans I mentioned, so the, the Como 2030 Plan. Covers along Como Avenue here, the pink area is the. West Midway Industrial Area and then the two green areas here are the. Westgate Stationery Plan and the Raymond Stationery Plan and this hashed area is the Historic District. So the St. Anthony Park Community Council and the neighborhood, neighborhood volunteers led outreach work beginning back in 2017, they did online surveys. In getting over 400 respondents, they supplemented that with in-person surveys to make sure that the diversity of the neighborhood was reflected in, in. The responses they were getting to the surveys, they also supplemented that with business surveys in the fall of 2017. They drafted community goals based on that information and reviewed them at community forums. A draft was submitted to city staff review in December of 2018. So they've been waiting patiently as we've been getting through our comp plan and the Met Council has been reviewing all the, the comp plans to finally get theirs. Reviewed and, and here at the public hearing. The plan was organized around three key guiding questions. What will be, what will we do to ensure the equitable access for all housing, for all in housing, jobs. Food and movement from place to place. What will we do to respond to climate change as a neighborhood within a city? And what will we do to support the shift to a creative, more diverse economy? And you'll see those questions are reflected in the plan structure, these are the, the chapters of the plan and they have a chapter dedicated to each of those questions. Equity, climate change, economic business development, those three chapters are not required by us. So they took it upon themselves to organize their plan that way. I think it's pretty innovative and could be a model for, for other. Neighborhoods going through a neighborhood planning process. In addition to that, they have. Housing chapter, historic preservation, transportation, parks and rec, water, soil and air, which are kind of your more typical chapters. But those three questions really. Are, are seen throughout kind of the content of each of those chapters. In terms of comprehensive plan compliance, the, the plan is consistent with the 2040 Plan, there was a direct link between their policies and the 2040 land uses. There are a few housing policies that we just asked that they revise for clarity, which they provided updated versions to those in you this week. And in terms of testimony received so far, we got the letter from. The District Council with two updates, the, the five updated chapter, housing chapter policies. And then the St. Anthony Unified Design Standard was, which update are an update to some design standards that were in the, the plan, the. The draft plan, and those design standards were worked, were made in collaboration with the Creative Enterprise Zone. Towerside Innovation District and Prospect Park, which all share some geography. You can see the orange outline here is St. Anthony Park, the blue shaded area is the Creative Enterprise Zone, Towerside is this area. That. Abuts Stadium Village, includes parts of Prospect Park and parts of St. Anthony Park and the Creative Enterprise Zone. So the idea is that those. Design guidelines will be used throughout these different areas to have a sense of cohesion and help create a. Sense of place. So the next steps is the public hearing today, any edits and resolution will go back through the Comprehensive Neighborhood Planning Commission. Recommendation resolution will go through Planning Commission and then review and approval will go through city council and Met Council. And with that, that's my presentation.
Thank you. So I will now open up the floor for the commission members to ask questions of staff. After that, I will open the public hearing on this study. So there are questions or comments, if you could. Enter, see or cue or. Raise your hand. Alright, seeing no questions from the commissioners, the following rules of procedure will be used in conducting the hearing. All testimony and questions will be addressed to the Chair. If you, if you are a member of the public that would like to speak during the public hearing, you will be asked to identify yourself, speakers should state their name and address for the record before beginning their presentation. All comments must be confined to the topics of the public hearing, which is the proposed District 12 Plan. Each speaker may, may speak only once, again, speakers are requested to address all questions to the Chair. Planning Commission members may address questions to the speakers and to the staff. You will be limited to no more than three minutes. People who exceed the time limit may have their microphones muted by staff, please mute yourself during this meeting except during your three minutes when you're specifically called upon to speak. When the Planning Commission closes the public hearing and refers the matter to the Comprehensive and Neighborhood Planning Commission, Committee. Planning staff will hold the record open for additional written testimony that they receive by 4:30 on Monday, March 8th, 2021. If you would like to speak on this item, please identify yourself now and include your name on the comment section so that I can call upon you at the appropriate time. Staff will now create a list of speakers to be called. I will make a second request for any speakers on this public hearing to either identify yourself. On the comment section or auto, audibly. Alright, I'm not seeing anybody wanting to comment on this. I'll ask one last time if there's anyone that wants to speak. On this District 12 Plan. Seeing no one, there will be no further testimony and I will ask, turn to Commissioner Grill for a motion.
This is Commissioner Grill, I would make a motion that we. Close the, sorry, you've closed the public hearing already.
I think we still need the motion on that though.
Okay, because Commissioner Riley is making a motion to close the public hearing.
And to hold the, the written testimony until Monday, March 8th at 4:30.
Yes, and to hold the written testimony until Monday, March 8th at 4:30.
Thank you, motion made by Commissioner Grill, is there a second?
Second, this is Commissioner Perryman.
Motion by Commissioner Grill, second by Commissioner Perryman, Sonia, can we get a roll call?
Chair. Oh.
Go on.
I was, Chair, sorry, I see a hand up from Commissioner Muchipau.
Oh, sorry Commissioner Muchipau.
Sorry, that was, I was seconding and I. I lowered it, thank you.
Thanks, so we'll go ahead and take a roll call on that motion.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy. Commissioner Grill.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Commissioner Hong.
Yes.
Commissioner Perryman.
Yes.
Commissioner Presley.
Yes.
Commissioner Raisberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Said.
Yes.
Commissioner Taggeoff.
Yes.
Commissioner Underwood.
Yes.
Commissioner Yang.
Yes.
Commissioner Muchipau.
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy, once again?
Yes, I'm sorry, I couldn't get my microphone unmuted.
Okay, unanimous.
All right, so that motion carries to close the public hearing on the District Twelve Plan, but hold uh the record open until Monday, March uh eighth for written testimony at four thirty. The next item on the agenda is Zoning Committee. Commissioner Baker, uh, the chair, was unable to be here today. Um, and so I will be reading that report that he sent to me. Uh, the March ninth site plan meeting has been canceled. The upcoming zoning committee meeting includes the James Avenue Apartments, ten seventy-four James Avenue. It's a conditional use permit for a sixty-nine foot building height and adjusted variance for building setbacks. The North End Community Center, ten twenty-five Rice Street, will be uh do asking for a conditional use permit for a multi-use community recreation center with modification of a condition to permit principal access from Lawson Street and for variance for parking lots, a front setback of twenty-five feet minimum, which is a seven-foot proposed. The Lexington Landing Phase Two at nine fifteen Albion Avenue can, will be coming floors for a conditional use permit for a fifty-foot building height. And the Grand Cleveland Parking Lot uh at two fifteen Summit Avenue for a site plan review for the parking lot uh condition amendment. Moving on to the items that were discussed at the zoning committee. An old business was the James Avenue Apartments at ten seventy-four James Avenue. A conditional use permit for an increase in the building height and variance for the front and rear yard setbacks. Since the applicant and staff are still working on that case, it was requested for this item to be laid over until our next zoning committee meeting. The committee voted seven zero to lay over the item to the next zoning committee meeting and voted eight to zero to have the public hearing open for testimony on changes to the application. New business was Provincial House at eighteen eighty Randolph Avenue. A conditional use permit for emergency housing facilities serving twenty-two to thirty families. The applicant Interfaith Action of Greater St. Paul is a faith-based nonprofit agency. It operates an emergency housing program called Project Home. The applicant intends to lease space in the Provincial House Building on property owned by the Sisters of St. Joseph to establish an emergency housing facility serving twenty-two to thirty families as part of its Project Home Program. Staff found that all the conditions and standards were met. The District Council recommended approval of this application. We received sixty-seven letters of support for this application, and three people spoke in uh support during the public hearing. There were five letters of opposition for this application, and no one spoke in opposition. The committee voted eight to zero to approve this application. So the motion coming out of the committee was to approve. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, uh Sonia, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Hong?
Yes.
Commissioner Perryman?
Yes.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizberg?
Yes.
Mr. Said?
Yes.
Mr. Taggiaf?
Yes.
Commissioner Underwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Yang?
Yes.
Commissioner Muchapau?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, so the motion for a conditional use permit for emergency housing facility is approved at eighteen eighty Randolph Avenue. The next item that came before the committee was fifteen oh nine Marshall Avenue. It's a conditional use permit to increase maximum height at the rear property line from twenty-five feet to thirty-eight feet. The project's uh site was rezoned from I one to T three. The applicant owns the property. The, the applicant owns the property and intends to demolish the existing vacant one-story building and serve as parking to construct a four-point-five-story apartment building with parking, circulation, mechanical, and lounge space in the basement, and four stories of residential units above. A total of sixty units are planned. The applicant states in the application materials that the units will be classified as affordable at the eighty percent AMI level. The applicant requests the maximum height of structures at the rear of the property line to be thirty-eight feet instead of twenty-five. This would provide for the proposed fifty-two and one-quarter height of the northeast portion of the L-shaped building, which is set back fifteen feet, eight inches from the rear property line. Staff found that all five standards were met for this application. The Union Park Community Council provided a letter of support for this project. There were no letters of support, uh, and no one spoke in favor of this application during the public hearing. There were two letters in opposition of this application, and one person spoke against the project during the public hearing. The committee voted seven to zero to approve this application with uh I abstained from voting on this matter uh because I had a question since it also came for a variance on the BZA. So the motion is come, uh, coming out of committee is to approve. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none. Sonia, can we get a roll call?
Okay, Commissioner Muchapau?
Yes.
Commissioner Underwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Perryman?
Yes.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Hong?
Yes.
Commissioner Taggiaf?
Yes.
Commissioner Yang?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizberg?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, so the motion to approve a conditional use permit at fifteen oh nine Marshall Avenue to increase, increase maximum height at the rear property line from twenty-five to thirty-eight feet is approved. The next item that came before the committee was eleven sixty-four West Seventh Street uh for rezoning uh from an R two, RT two townhouse residential to RM two multifamily residential. The site was recognized as a pre, a pre-existing sober house for nine residents in twen- two thousand and eight as part of the sober house zoning study and approved for uh sober, sober house for eleven residents by the zoning administrator in twenty nineteen. The application is to rezone the property to allow future multifamily development. It is anticipated to include ten to fourteen market rate one-bedroom units. Staff found that all standard for met. The District Council provided a letter of support for the application. The District Council submitted a letter of support for the project. There were no other letters of support or opposition for this application, and no one spoke in favor or against this application during the public hearing. The committee voted eight to zero to approve this application. Is there any discussion on the motion coming from the committee? Seeing none, Sonia, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner Boy?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Hong?
Yes.
Commissioner Perryman?
Yes.
Commissioner Muchapau?
Yes.
Commissioner Presley? Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizberg? Commissioner Rizberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Taggiaf?
Yes.
Commissioner Underwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Yang?
Yes.
Unanimous.
So the motion for a reestablishment of non-conforming use, oh, excuse me, the motion for rezon from RT two townhouse residential to RM two at eleven sixty-four West Seventh Street is approved. The next item was two seventy-five Erie, uh, uh, reestablishment of non-conforming use as a duplex. The structure was constructed in eighteen eighty-seven as a church. The property received a variance for lot size from the zoning committee to allow the conversion of the church to a legal duplex in nineteen sixty-eight. Later, the building was converted illegally to a triplex. The proper, property is currently zoned R four residential, which does not permit a duplex. The property lost its legal non-conforming studies, status as a duplex when it was listed as a category two vacant building in twenty thirteen. The forty-foot-wide, five thousand four hundred square feet property was purchased as a vacant property in twenty fifteen and was renovated to be a single-family home at that time. Staff found that all of the duplex conversion guidelines um and findings were met. The District Council submitted a letter of support for the project. There was one letter of support for this application and se- seven letters in opposition. No one spoke in favor or against the application during the public hearing. The committee voted eight to zero to approve this application. Is there any discussion in the motion coming from committee? All right, seeing none. Sonia, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Hong?
Yes.
Commissioner Perryman?
Yes.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner Muchapau?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Taggiaf?
Yes.
Commissioner Underwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Yang?
Yes.
Unanimous.
So the reestablish of non-conforming use as a duplex is approved. The final item before the zoning committee was at seven ninety-five to eight oh one Barge Channel Road. A conditional use permit to allow internal conveyance pits below the regulatory flood protection elevation in a new building after logistics proposes construction of a new fertilizer, excuse me, ultra logistics proposes construction of a new fertilizer storage building. Staff found that all the standards of this application were met. The District Council had no, uh, had not commented on the application. By the time of the zoning committee meeting, we received no letters in support about or, or opposition of this project, and we had one person speak in opposition of the application, with no one speaking in favor during the public hearing. The committee voted eight to zero to approve this application. Was there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Hong?
Yes.
Commissioner Perryman?
Yes.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner Muchapau?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Taggiaf?
Yes.
Commissioner Underwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Yang?
Yes.
Unanimous.
So that motion um at for uh, at seven nine ninety-five to eight oh one Barge Channel Road was a, for a conditional use permit is approved. That was the, all of the items at the zoning committee, so we uh, we had a, a long meeting, but it wasn't too long, I don't think, this last time. The next item on the agenda is the Comprehensive Neighborhood Planning Committee. Commissioner Grill?
So this is Commissioner Grill. Um, we had our meeting on Wednesday night. Um, we had a working session um to go through items on the parking study that um committee members might have had questions about. Um, and then we got a presentation from uh Mr. Germy on the homeless, homeless services zoning study. Um, it's not on the agenda for today. It's on the agenda for our meeting on the nineteenth. Um, so I believe that we will cover, cover that in detail um at that meeting. Um, but that will be to eventually release the zoning study um and set a public hearing uh at a future meeting. And then I believe um our next regularly scheduled meeting uh is not on the calendar until the seventeenth, but I believe we do have a meeting next week, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, which would be our final meeting on the uh parking study uh before a recommendation comes from the committee. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Commissioner Grill. Uh, and I did see that Ms. Mohan commented that we do have a comp plan meeting on March tenth. The next item on the agenda i- is uh the Transportation Committee, Commissioner Rizberg.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, this is Jeff Rizberg. Um, on, our last meeting was on February twenty-second, um where we heard the, a transportation analysis of the Hillcrest Master Plan. Um, we heard for uh about two finalist scenarios um in the master plan and um had a, had an interesting discussion. Uh, particularly related to traffic uh flow uh within and, and through the, and, and around the development. Um, so our next uh meeting is March twenty-second, and an agenda is to be determined. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Rizberg. I should have asked any questions for Commissioner Grill or Commissioner Rizberg? All right, next item is Communication Nominations Committee, Commissioner, Commissioner Underwood.
Thank you. I'll, I'll just share that as was um uh updated earlier this morning, we have a number of new commissioners being sworn in at our next meeting in two weeks, and that, which is exciting. And um the annual report, I believe, is done and uh will be distributed electronically uh when it's ready to go. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Underwood. Any questions for Commissioner Underwood? Next item on the agenda is the Task Force Liaison Report. Uh, Commissioner DeJoy, any update on the Hillcrest Development?
Sure, I want to announce that there is an online community meeting with the Hillcrest finalist scenarios Tuesday, March sixteenth at five thirty. I have posted in the chat how to RSVP if you'd like to join us online for that, and that's my report.
Thank you, and I don't think it's up yet, but Commissioner Grill, is there any update on your task force?
There is not.
Okay. The, I'll call for old business. New business. Seeing none. We will adjourn the March fifth, twenty twenty-one St. Paul Planning Commission meeting. Thanks, everybody, for joining, and um have, have a good weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.